You guys got quiet so we can time for us to start. Thank you for being here. I'm Jeff Orbin, Chairman of the County Commissioners and we'd like to say welcome. We're glad all of you are here. Let me say this, I don't know, I can't back this up by looking all the way back to the 50's, but I don't think the County Commissioners have ever met in an official meeting in Highland. Is that true? There has been a long time.
Long time.
It's been a long time.
It's been a long time.
So we decided to do this, partly because it felt like it was the right thing to do. No agenda to it, us, we just want to come to Highland and have a meeting. And what happened, what we hoped would happen has happened. We have several people here that we've actually never seen before or rarely seen because it's difficult for you to get down the mountain, so that's why we're here. And I'd like to see us do this more often, at least once a year or so. Anyway, thank you. Yeah. We'd like to start, so if you are. But thanks to Commissioner Tate, he did a lot of work with us together. And I'm gonna say this publicly in front of you folks, Commissioner Tate does an outstanding job as Commissioner. He looks out for Highlands, looks out for Macon County. And part of the reason that I asked these guys to have this meeting up here was for him and just to publicly thank him for what he does. And I'm gonna recognize, Commissioner Tate, we usually have names badges that we turn to work with down there, so I'm gonna ask him to introduce everybody. We understand everybody here doesn't know anybody up here, what our role is. So I'd like to see Commissioner Tate take this check and introduce everybody across from here.
Yeah, I appreciate the good turnout tonight. I warmed all markets with serpents. A lot of faces, I know. Let me start right here, this is Justin Jones. He is our county attorney and he helps us stop the eyes across the street, across the teams. And you're gonna have to get your address right tonight because we're not in the West Main Street.
That's right.
This is Ron Haven, he's our District Two Commissioner. And today is his birthday.
Birthday.
Wasn't great, we lost.
Commissioner Ronnie Bill, he's also the District Two County Commissioner. Department Chairman, Commissioner Jeff Orbin. District Three Commissioner, Oliver Dignan. Best County Manager in State, Jeff Gordon. Our phenomenal Finance Director, Mrs. Lori Hall. And our Community Attorney.
Deputy.
Make one up, that's right. This is the man that makes it happen right here, this is Mr. Mike Duck.
All right, good job, man. Let me say this, as we start getting to the meeting, I know all of y'all agree with the process, we have at every meeting a chance that anybody can say anything they want to about anything. Okay, that's public comment. And we just ask you not to be too mean to somebody if you're gonna jump into it pretty good. Pretty much whatever you want to say about any subject is open at that time. It doesn't have to be on the agenda, it doesn't have to be anything we've talked about before, it can be anything that's on your mind. We have a sign-up sheet for that, and Officer Trammell has had that in the back, but if you came in and you wanted to speak to some subject, if you would just come up here and put your name on the sheet, we still got time to do that. So just wanted to, we've had several sign-ups, but I want to let you know that. We always take a minute to give any Commissioner a chance to make announcements, anything they want to bring the attention of Jeff Orbin that might not be on the agenda. And Commissioner Tate's already mentioned, but today is Commissioner Haven's birthday. And I had this idea that I wanted all five Commissioners to sing "Happy Birthday" to it. And I realized I'm the only one that can sing, so it sort of bothers you. That's okay. We'll just say, we'll just say, "Happy Birthday, Commissioner Haven." I apologize, I just know you're on with the main. He's done well, he's advanced, thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Fifty-five today.
Happy Birthday. Happy Birthday. Any other announcements?
You live it up on me real easy, too. I didn't just jump on you.
Any other announcements you have, Ron? Commissioner Beal?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we will be going to Raleigh tomorrow. It's County Assembly Day on Wednesday, that's when the County Commissioners from across the state, Chairman will be going along with Commissioner Haven and myself. The Senator gave out the budget last night, a couple of things that really bothered all of us. The lottery funds, basically, has always been set for 40 percent. We're supposed to be getting, but we've not got that for the last two years, and now that it's gonna be completely done away in this Senate budget. And also the Rural Center money, if you've got any water or sewer in Highlands, it's come through the Rural Center, that appears to be in real trouble. So those are two things that we'll be talking to our representatives about. And I have meetings tomorrow, starting at 1:30, but we'll be there all day Wednesday and part of Thursday, so, Mr. Chairman, we look forward to the County Assembly Day.
Okay. Commissioner Tate, anything else? No further announcements. Okay, if we would, we always take a moment to sort of clear minds of things that's happening today and just focus on the important things we have, so we'd ask you to stand with us if we're gonna turn it over. If you would, you'll be able to work a stop. And we need to say the pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Tate, the flag, if you could place the back of the room. And Commissioner Tate, your allegiance, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have the time for public comment. We have Bob Longsley, we have the, what? Water on Route 28, that's what it, okay. Come right here.
I'm Bob Longsley, I've been working on Queen Island, subdivision island of Route 28. And I wanted to suggest to you all, particularly since you're here, we have Highlands, that maybe there's...
I don't think that's on, Bob. I don't know.
Probably not this week, it's not on.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, buddy.
The purpose of my stop here is just to be brand new. I think it would be well if the County Commissioners could work with Highlands and find some way through grants, through the state, through the federal government, to help out, to bring Highlands water out beyond the Forest Service land, out to where we are. We do have water now, but we'd like to have the fire protection of the water system. And I think there are a lot of other people out there that would like it. And one of the problems, the obvious problem with all this is the money. There would be a grant, state available, and federal government. The real troublemaker in all this is the federal government, because we have two, two and a half miles of Forest Service land between our property and the city of Highlands. Any water line out to help us out goes through a lot of Forest Service property and somebody has to pay for that directly. So I'm just hoping that you all could do some long-range thinking with Highlands about the idea of joining together on a grant request to get some state money. We think it's a project that you should be interested in because we're way out in the county, we're not Highlands, we won't be in Highlands because we're intervening in Forest Service.
That's about all I have. What's your addage?
Forty-three feet view.
Forty-three, I'm sorry?
Forty-three feet view.
Big view.
If you've got water, did you get the problems with that two-inch lag fixed?
Yes, yes, we have water, we've had city water all along.
I know the pressure, the flow, the volume was way down on it, and you had to spend some money to get it.
Yes, we did. It's passable, but certainly not the volume that we would get with a good system of a six-inch line that gets service fire on it, it's light. And we're particularly interested in that because there have been forest fires on Route 28, and I think we're outwardly worse subject to a forest fire than any example. We'd like to get some long, longer.
Anything else, sir? Thank you, Bob. Appreciate that. We have Jeff Weller, come on up. And he's gonna speak about the Buck Creek Recreation Committee.
Hello. I think I know most of you here, but the two of you that I have known before, I'm Jeff Weller. I own the Sun Architecture here in town, also on the County Rec Commission at the moment. But I'm here just to speak very quickly, and then I'll get anyway, about Buck Creek, and I know some of the discussion that's gonna be coming up at some point in the near future is about acquisition of property, potential acquisition of property, if possible. And then maybe soccer fields or just flat grass areas at Buck Creek. And I just wanted to voice my support for expanding Buck Creek, the Zachary Park, I guess you could call it. Just to give you a little bit of background, started coaching youth soccer many years ago, was on the Macon County Soccer Club, worked for seven years. Been the middle school soccer coach at Highland School for four years. I'm currently the varsity girls soccer coach at Highland School. And appreciate everything everybody here did, as well as the school for providing the field at the school. But I don't know if you're aware that that is the only regulation soccer field that exists in this town. We have a lot of youth soccer players, of course, they start at the age of three, and we play on up through high school, of course. And there's actually men's groups that also come and play. But currently, this, like I said, the field at the school is the only regulation field. There is the field at Buck Creek, which is the outfield of the baseball field, which is not regulation, it's eight yards shy at maximum of being a regulation field in length, and it's the minimum width. And in the spring, just, I don't know if you're not familiar with it, but in the spring, when baseball starts, then we have no soccer field. So all of the youth kids that play soccer in Highlands from the age of three through middle school, in spring, have no soccer field. They play an outfield with the town baseball field, which also gets used for our baseball team. The school field is occupied with varsity girls, as well as middle school boys and girls, and high school boys. So there's a definite need, I feel, in this town for it. I did want to mention that, you know, there's been a lot of talk about baseball and other sports, and baseball is very important in this town, too. That baseball field out there, other than the one that's here at town, high school uses, is the only baseball field that we use for youth baseball. And like I said, in the spring, that negates soccer. And what we're talking about, I think, where you are looking, potentially looking at private property and develop, could provide a regulation soccer field, but I don't want you to look at it as just soccer, because, you know, you see the baseball kids out there, one group, H group is batting and fielding, and one H group is doing throwing practice, and other things, just in the outfield or outside defense. So this would also provide us a large area where even during baseball season, there would be multiple opportunities for kids to practice, whatever sport it is, whether it's soccer, it could be, who cares what it is. It's just, we need flat grass, and that's kind of a commodity up here, that we don't have a lot of. But we greatly appreciate you considering that when the time is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate you being here. Next, we have Tim Mosley, Tim, as we come forward, I think he also wants to speak to the Recreation Committee.
Commissioners, I see. I want to speak on the field based on the standpoint of, I have coaches for soccer up here, as a parent, I've toured and played up here. As somebody may know, our school has a fantastic soccer program, the record speaks for itself. One thing you may not realize is that when our varsity team is on the field, that's a huge majority of the male student population. The school is so small. And I think what that says is that the kids have a passion for the sport here in this area. By not having, while there's a full field to practice on, I think we're doing a disservice to those kids. Creates a gap in our feeder program. We have direct leagues, which, as the younger kids, they can play in smaller areas, but by not having that full field, they're missing out. We've had what we call the challenge level teams, which are our tribal teams, that come around, go from county to county and play. I think what happens is, our kids show up in some of these other fields, and they see what they're missing. I know Asheville is an extreme example of that, Asheville has the Asher Turf Fields, Lighted Fields, and things like that. The kids show up and look around, you can see it on your face, they just feel like they're really missing out. Not to know if you're asking for an Asher Turf Field or anything, but just a full-size field for kids to practice on and work on. They're trying to play in a partial, or a part of a baseball outfield, so they have no idea about boundaries, the spatial concept of a full soccer field. When they go out to try and compete at an advanced level, they're starting out at a disadvantage. You just don't feel that that's fair to the kids, so. The other thing that I feel very strongly about is, the kids in Highlands have no home field advantage, they don't have a field that they can call their own. By not being able to play games up here, they're losing some of their fans, parents, grandparents, family members, friends, they don't have that opportunity to come see them play. I'm sure as many of you know, playing sports at that age is a big deal, or a lot of them, their life revolves around it. And finally, if you look around this community, it's very obvious they do have a passion for soccer. The amount of volunteers, the amount of businesses that support it, that are helping things in school fields, whether it be just the turf itself, or the fundraisers for the schools, the turnouts that we have with the red leagues, the number of kids from Highlands that play, I think that says a lot that supporting this all is something that the community is definitely behind, and I think they've shown their support for years through the volunteers and the continued practice and the continued support of it. As a parent and a former coach, that's where I stand on the need for a full-size field up here.
Tim, do you or Jeff want to have an idea how many kids, 100 or under, are active in soccer now?
Fourteen and under? I would put the number at about eighty to eighty-five. Which, if you put that in perspective, with the H groups that we're talking about, so that's second through eighth, that's six, there's 180 kids in that H group that go to Highland School. So that's almost half of the kids in Highlands. Yes. Do we have one left?
Okay, thank you very much. And next, we have Tay, Braumout.
Hi, Taylor. Mike, get away for a second. We appreciate y'all being up here. My name is Taylor Bronall, Tay Bronall. I love sports, I coached soccer up here, been doing that, coached basketball and played baseball. And I wanna not reiterate so much of what they said, but a lot of kids play soccer. Jeff told me about that. I did it for five years, now see a bunch of y'all coming through. We just finished our spring season, I just wanted to tell you about that, I thought maybe that could help out. We coached over, we practiced over there at the town field, and we did it twice a week, and we tried to schedule that, but the baseball team had an away game, and if they didn't have two away games that week, we'd do it after they finished practice. And yeah, we made it work. The, carrying the goals out, I figured them around my truck all year, airstop, and carry them out, send them up, play, bring them back in, do it the next time. Send them up in the outfield, sixteen or more kids out there screaming, no lines, but having a good time playing soccer, because it's just a lot of fun. And there's no football up here, so the choices are, I think they're choice of a lot of the kids out here. Soccer is something that is a great activity, too. We've got big basketball turnout in the winter time, boys and girls, baseball season's strong. With soccer season, I was out there on the town field with my group, the other kids are playing out there, at the Zachary Park Field, beyond the curb fence, between that and the chain link fence on the road. So we're just trying to squeeze in where we can, and boy, I sure wish there was that, I'll say, flat land with grass, not flat grass, but flat land with grass and nothing else you could call that.
All right, thank you. You have a question, sir? Next, we have David Wilks. David is our friend, he used to play at County Heights, as most of you know, and he's here to make a few comments.
I just wanted to, excuse me, officially welcome y'all, appreciate you having the meeting here. Sorry, the last few years, we've had a better and better working relationship, both with the County, Town Franklin, and then every four months, we do a dinner with all three of these groups together, and it's helped keep the communication up. And we all know how hard it's been to get any attention from the state legislature to Western North Carolina forever. It seems to be getting even more difficult to get attention and/or funding. So we're pretty much gonna have to depend on each other for a lot of the problems we're gonna have to deal with. And I just want to reiterate that we want to keep a good working relationship with the county, back and forth, because it's come down to local government that's gonna have to support what we do up here, with what we can get from the state and federal government. So we appreciate the help, we'll be coming to you, and come to us for anything we can help with. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you. Did you need to call your board at this stage?
No.
Or you're not?
Okay.
Very good. Next, we have Commissioner Tate, I think he had the letter, there's somewhere to give it to him.
Yes.
It's gonna be read here.
So I'll read it real quick.
Okay. Sheriff, can you hear me, Tate's back?
Tate's fine. Can you start playing? You don't want me saying it.
I brought this letter to the Macon County Commissioners, and I've asked Mr. Tate to read this on my behalf. I have worked for Macon County Emergency Services full-time for well over half my life, 26 years and eight months, and part-time for over two years. When I went to part-time, my pay was cut by almost $6 per hour to what a starting paramedic would make, $13.08. And now, since you have done a new pay study, I was told that the starting paramedic will make $16.28 per hour, but a part-time paramedic would stay at $13.08 per hour. The way I look at it, between the almost $6 an hour loss and the $3.20, $3.20 difference now that would be almost $9 an hour that we lose, I don't think that it is fair, because I know that you were always looking at overtime, and that I can't take off from a higher-paying job, you gotta work a job that pays much less. And I'm sure that the rest of the part-time people cannot either. I suggest that you're either looking to at least bring part-time pay up to the same starting full-time paramedic pay. I feel that would encourage helping part-time people. If you don't have the part-time that can work some of the extra shifts, then you have to pay full-time people to work, which goes into a lot of overtime, plus you don't have to pay the benefits to part-time, which is true. I have taught to several other part-time people, and they feel the same as I do. I called David Key's office on Thursday, May 9th, to find out for sure what I had heard was correct, and I was informed that it was. At that time, I told him to please take me off the part-time list, and I quit. I hope to be at this meeting, but if I am not, feel free to call me, and I'll explain what happened. I have worked with shifts that I could to help out, and taken quite a few second calls when the med unit in the Highlands was busy, and the med unit for Franklin was not in range. Please look into this matter, thank you for your time. Sincerely, Gary Adams.
Commissioner Tate, I would just suggest passing that to our county manager, Mike, as our personnel. Have you guys?
Want to say something?
You have your announcements. Okay, that was the last public comment that I had on the list, thank you. I was gonna say, ladies and gentlemen, it was all y'all, thank you for your input. It's nice to be, at this time, we usually have a public hearing, or if we have a public hearing, this is the time to do that. We have another schedule. Now, this is the time we have adjustments to improve the agenda, so gentlemen, are there any items you'd like to add to the agenda, strike the agenda, modify, or otherwise change to the agenda?
Briefly, Mr. Chairman, we were gonna do this last Tuesday, but two brief items that have been asked to fill out the agenda at this meeting, for all aid, if you desire. One, as you all know, Coach Cooper's my predecessor to this position, and worked with that head of community by the Department of Labor for LA foot-in for that head of community.
Correct.
Doesn't cost the community, doesn't cost the county tax rate for one entity to do this. Our service requires some sort of commitment from the county, and I'm sure you're up to speed on this, I've been talking with Anthony Crawford. I said I will present it to the board to see if we want to let this thing just die, or if we want to work with the Forest Service to do this foot-in. And the second thing, I think Jack's been working with Bill Bryson on the utility refund thing, just want to get that on public record, that's it. And you can do it tonight, or on another meeting?
I have no objection to that. Paul, why don't we add the, both of those under old business, we have had some discussions about it before.
Okay.
Let's make that nine A and nine Bs, and Jack, I didn't have any old business, did you have any old business?
No.
So let's make that A would be that of LA slash Forest Service foot-in, and B would be the, what you call the...
Utility refund. Thank you.
And when that comes up, make some comments about that, and we'll get that in record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Tate, getting, I think A...
I have two items, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
From a conversation with the county manager, Bob Bry, I believe that ten F could be strike, that Greg, obviously, the consideration for clearing handling the surplus, to take care of, correct?
You have any additions to this, John?
All right. And I would like to add in this place, what some of these gentlemen were talking about, potential acquisition of property in Zachary Park.
So that, okay. So ten F, that's all that Zachary Park. Commissioner Beal, anything to add, Dave?
I would like to just mention something people had did last, kind of said, something that I haven't been able to communicate, which was a little bit about consideration for next year's tax rate possibly, looking at maybe do a job on if you could, I'd like to, I'll take it to you, to say what I can say.
Okay. So we found that pretty appropriate, I think after Jack's presentation. Anything else to add, or do you...
Close.
We have motion to second to approve the agenda as a meeting, we need discussion. All papers say aye.
All right.
The vote, that motion passes, the agenda stands, and we'll start through that the first thing. I guess the largest thing lining on the agenda is the presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2013, 2014 budget by the county manager, just so the public know how this process works. We meet in, or this board at least, it's met in my tenure, we met in January and had a board workshop. We have some general discussions, no budget figures are set, because the budget starts July 1st. We have general discussion about nine, two, four, and two, as we come in here. Part of that discussion includes the vote. And at that time, shortly after that, county manager with department heads, and going through each one of those, lineup by lineup, and indicating, we, county manager at our Board of Representatives in January, that we would not consider a tax increase, that we wanted to live within our curriculums, and we asked him to come back to the budget. We have not, we have not seen the budget. This is the first time he has met with his department heads, and now he's come back to us to present the budget for the first time. And what we do after this is, we take this under consideration, and then we will have, we will have several budget workshops, we call them, where we will actually go through the budget. We will have time, but like I say, this is, you saw him have these budgets, it's rather thick, rather complicated, so we will, we have some time to go through it, and then we will meet and discuss items, and then at the end, we will have to vote whether to accept his budget or not. Is that a fair assessment of where we are, Jack?
Close.
Okay. So pull, if you would, pull that mic up where they can, they can hear you.
There's one over here. This works a lot.
And so Jack is gonna take...
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
My wife says to talk too loud anyway, so I might not need that microphone. This is chairman of the county, Richard.
Okay, go right ahead. Go right ahead.
I'll just sit right now. I'm gonna have to get up and try to work this computer in a few minutes if I get those pictures to go up. But I don't have a, I don't have a lot of PowerPoint slides. Just a few. But anyway, Chairman is correct in how that budget process works. I've been doing this for quite a long time. But it's required by the Department General Statues, the Budget Physical Control Act, that the county manager is designated as the budget officer for the county. And as such, must present a balanced budget by June 1st each year. We've been in the past trying to get this done as early in April and or in May as we can. We have originally scheduled to probably do this last Tuesday, but because of some conflicts, we're doing it today. As Chairman, Commissioner, I think this is probably the first time in history that the annual county budget has been presented to Highlands, North Carolina. It's usually done down the fort now, so I feel pretty safe to say that it's never been presented up here. But we're glad to be here. And as Mayor mentioned earlier, we do have a good working relationship with the towns, and we appreciate that. We appreciate the hospitality and providing this place for us tonight. I'll go through this. It may take a little while, but I'll try to go through as briefly as I can and try to point out some of the highlights of the proposed budget. I will say that the budget will be on the website tomorrow. There's probably a couple of topographical errors that need to be corrected, but the entire budget, proposed budget, will be on the county website tomorrow. We'll also have a copy of it here at the library, one in Franklin, the public library down there, one in the finance department's office, and one in my office. And I think we'll have one in Nantahala as well. But it's available through a variety of ways. People who look at that, and we'd encourage people to do that. If you have any particular questions about it, feel free to let us know. We'll try to answer those. And I'll kind of start through that now with your permission. Bacon County continues to be in a pretty strong, solid financial position compared to a lot of the counties in North Carolina. We have 100 counties altogether. We still have the lowest ever on tax rate. And if you saw one of the local newspapers recently, you saw a little kind of cartoon in there with me and the county manager from Jackson County. There's pretty a rivalry. The county tax rate at Bacon County is riveted, because that's what it takes to provide the services that the county provides. And Mr. Woodman and I get about that from time to time. But we do have the lowest tax rate right now in North Carolina, $27.09 per $100 of value. And our fund balance remains fairly strong and healthy at this point. Having a good fund balance really provides a high degree of financial security in terms of being prepared for unexpected emergencies or shortfalls in revenue. And a healthy fund balance, a conservative approach to budgeting, I think along with our consistent tax collection, which is fairly high. All that contributes to Bacon County's A-plus rating, bond rating we have. That was increased last year from an A on an A-plus, and we're still maintaining that. The past year has been remarkable in terms of Bacon County and the accomplishments that have been undertaken and accomplished over the last 12 months, especially in this area of economic distress, not only in our state, but throughout the nation. I think we're very pleased that the record will show that the county has been vigilant in its approach to what I call responsible financial planning while making needed improvements and making investments in the future of our county for all of our citizens. I sincerely believe this is what is expected if we are to be good stewards of the public trust. I'll take time in the budget messages to emphasize both some highlights of the current year and some challenges that we may be facing in the year to come. For the current year, we've been able to complete the new K-4 all elementary school. That school was finished and opened on time at a cost of approximately $11.3 billion. A little bit more of that, and add the engineering, architectural fees and so forth. But it actually came out to about $118 a square foot. And we financed that with qualified school construction bonds with a net interest rate of about $0.48 and over 17-year period. Glad to be able to get that project underway and in operation, and it's up and running now. We did, we were able to replace the windows in the newly renovated Nantahala school. We just did a $1.8 million renovation of that school last year. We were able to save a little bit of money from that project along with some other county funds and some school board participation. We're able to go ahead, not only do that renovation, but also replace all the windows in that school. And I think it was very, very much needed. Of course, we're doing the construction renovation, $8.50 on the Highlands K-12 school that started. And we hope to be able to have that completed by the time school starts this year. This is the first time, I can remember, in a long time that kids got out actually three, four months. And so, we've got an opportunity to get all this work done before school starts, and so we can avoid some disruption there. We're financing that project with what they call QZAP, which is Qualified Zone Academy Funds. And the good thing about that particular $8.50 loan is that it's going to be at 0% interest. So, we're forcing in that respect. County has coordinated the funding and administration of the Swiss Colony Water Project for the county Franklin. Cost of that part of the project, about $750,000. And that will be completed this month. That was part of an original Highway 28 North, a riverbed water project that the county undertook several years ago, at a cost of about $1.8 billion. And this entire system, once it's completed and signed off, will be turned over to the county for maintenance and operations. Bacon County funded 10% match to a $2 million Bacon County Airport apron renewal project this year. That's been completed. And the county airport is now in line for additional FAA funding for next fiscal year, which would actually go toward widening the existing runway. We've completed the renovation of the new sheriff's office. And I think the sheriff will agree, it's a little bit better than what he had to deal with before. And that was completed and moved into, it's on Palmer Street, if you haven't been by there. Also in the same building is a new office for our driver's license, DMV office for the driver's license in the same building with the sheriff's office. The Barrett Building, which we sometimes call the old post office, we had a renovation there that was completed this past year. And now we have a state-of-the-art emergency communications center on the top floor of that building with all new modern equipment. And we have an elevator in that building now that services all three floors. That's probably one of the most well-built buildings in the county. And it's there in the back. That's where you want to go. Its walls are about 200 feet thick. We're glad to get that project finished this year. Our priority has been also public safety and making sure that the equipment was up to date. And so, this past year's budget, we did actually purchase 60 patrol cars for the sheriff's office, two Analis's and 12 photolater monitoring machines for the EMS service. And along with that purchase, we added three auto pulse machines, one for each unit, one in Highlands, one in Franklin, and one in Nantahala. Thanks to the efforts of our finestr, we're able to refinance some existing long-term debt for the county. And we're saving by that refinancing somewhere in excess of $2.7 billion in interest charges along. So, we think that's a real savings for the county. We're able to provide a $8.50 to the Bacon County school system that has enabled them to upgrade their current information technology equipment. And we're glad to be able to do that. And part of the agenda tonight will include authorization for going ahead and ordering my track with some computers on that project. We just completed renovating the poolhouse and swimming pool at the Bacon County Recreation Park. I think those renovations make it safe and modern and probably a more family-friendly facility. That opens this month. As a matter of fact, Chairman, I believe this weekend, that facility will go to the public. The county was also able to purchase 40 of their tract known as the Parker Meadows property, at which in time will be developed into a very large ballpark recreation facility containing eight proposed baseball, softball fields, along with some other amenities. Our economic development efforts are paying off with increased activity in our business development center. We have new prospects for new job creation there. We're extremely fortunate to be able to help Tricorn International acquire and establish a new business here known as Franklin to deliver products. They replaced Whitley, who was in Franklin. And I think our EDC director, our Economic Development Commission, in both the county Franklin and Bacon County Commissioners are to be thanked, because they all contribute to make this project a success. We have a new Bacon County Health and Public Dental Clinic up and running now, and we are finally completing the long-awaited renovation of the Holly Springs Community Building. You've already got the chance to look at the that's been needed for quite some time. On the revenue side of the budget, growth in the tax base has been minimal. It's been that way for several years now. Our total gross countywide is probably less than 1%. Sales tax have begun to pick up a little bit. We've seen about a 2% increase in our sales tax. And we've been able to manage pretty much, pretty effectively, I think, with these fiscal challenges. And we contain a hope for an improved economy next year. We started the process on the budget this year with a mid-year pre-work session with board commissioners. And it was a consensus of the board at that time that we would disrupt the budget without an adjustment to the property tax rate. And so, the budget that we presented tonight meets that objective. We've, as the chairman said, we've met with department heads, reviewed their budgets, and come up with some recommendations. And tonight, we're presenting those recommendations in the form of a balanced budget. And after it's presented tonight, the board will schedule probably several work sessions to review the budget in detail. And we're hoping to have a public hearing on proposed budget with any modification to that on June 11th at 6:00 p.m. in the courthouse. Hopefully, by June 18th, we'll be able to adopt a budget for next fiscal year, which begins July 1st. Counties have to operate on a balanced budget. We don't have any choice in the matter. And so, our budget has to be effective and adopted in effect by July 1st of each year. We've got some graphs. I'm going to try to show these if I get this computer to work. We've got it here, but it's not showing up.
That's it. That's it.
Trying to do some pie graphs here to give you a visual idea what the budget looks like in its entirety. And if it comes up, we'll be able to see that. I'm not sure. Does it turn on?
Yes, it is now.
There it goes. Hopefully, that'll come into a little bit better focus. But in the proposed budget, we're looking at revenues. And you see there on that pie graph that a big chunk of our revenue from the county budget comes from tax collections, about 56.5% come from tax collections on real and personal property, including vehicles. Another big source of revenue, one of the largest sources of revenue, is our sales tax. And we get a little over 12.5% from that source. Another large area that we get, we call intergovernmental revenues. Those intergovernmental revenues are revenues that primarily come from the state or federal government. And those are usually earmarked for certain specific things within the budget. When you're looking at the entire budget on the county budget, it's probably about two-thirds of it is mandated by either the state or federal government. So, we have a little bit of discretion on about a third of it. But this is where the money comes from. We do have a fund balance appropriation of $1.6 million, which is about 3.5% of the budget. And we do collect some money on service fees. And it's on investments. I looked back at the budget earlier today, about five or six years ago. And we were collecting somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars a year in interest on investments. And you can see on this chart, it's down to about $5,000,000. It's just you just can't earn much money. I'm sure Bob's face the same thing with town values. Do you have to turn on the page? Yeah, turn on the page. It might be the same word.
We have 12-year-old speakers in the audience. They can help us with the... Thank you.
Give you an idea of property taxes, about a little over half of the revenue it takes to actually fund the county budget is property taxes. Our global real and personal property value, you see from the chart, is a little over $9 billion, $9,880,000. Motor vehicles in the county account for about $277 billion. So, the total estimated value of all taxable property in Bacon County is $9,365,000. At the current tax rate of $24.9 cents, which is the same as the proposed budget, we're seeing a tax levy of $24,523,859. Now, we don't collect 100% of money every year, so you'll see that 96.72% is actually what our annual flex rate is brought at 97%, which is good, but it's not 100%. Our estimated total leverage then is $25,174,736. Just to kind of keep it in mind, one penny on the tax rate right now with the tax base we have brings in $902,320. So, where's the money go? It goes to several places on there. You can see the breakdown. Public safety accounts for about 24%. That includes sheriff, jail, EMS, all those things that go with public safety. Human services, both the health department, social services, mental health, all those programs associated with human services. Education is 18% of this chart. The other thing that's a little bit deceiving is debt services, 8%. Most of the debt services, we'll show you a little bit later, is for, is for school projects. And so, most of that debt service, along with our appropriation for education, most of that comes together. General government, which is what most people think of when they think of the county government, is only 14% of the total budget. Looking at our budget over the past five years, you can see that in 2009, '10, the budget was just at $22 billion. And proposed budget for next year is $46,743,718. I thought it was interesting. I went back and looked at the fiscal year '08-'09 budget, and the total budget that was approved that year was $46,723,000. So, we're at $100,000 with the budget we had six years ago. So, it's had its ups and downs, its spikes and so forth, but it's fairly flat. Some things that people may not be aware of is that all the money to fund some of the county operations is not all 100% county money. And for example, in the health department, the county puts in about $57,000. And for example, in the health department, the county puts in about 57% of the total cost of operating the health department, the health department services. The other 43% comes from state service, state or federal revenues, or in some cases, fees. Social services is very much the same, only more dramatic. You can see that social services is a huge budget, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $4,000, $5,000. But 73% of the social services budget is from the federal government and state government to a smaller degree. The county office is in 27% of the cost of operating the entire department of social As I mentioned, we were talking about debt. We have outstanding debt now somewhere around $56 billion. If you look at that photograph, you'll see that the county debt outside of schools is about 13%. 87% of our current debt is for school, new schools, and school-related improvements. Fund balance has changed a little from year to year. You'll see back in 2007, 2008, these are the end of the fiscal year, by the way. The fund balance is $15,899,000, or about 35% of next year's budget. Next year, the next year, the fund balance went down to $14.7 billion, and was only, was about 33.8% of the budget. Last year, it was $14,000,000, or 134, 35%. In 2010, 11, our fund balance went up to $16,500, which is about 41%, but it's come back down since then. You can see that the total budget in 2011, 12, which is not the current year, but the year before this, was around 37.67% of the operating budget. With appropriations made from the fund balance this year, we expect probably that the fund balance on June 30th this year will be somewhere in the neighborhood of 35%, 35% of the operating budget of the county. What that means is we have enough money in fund balance at 25% to cover the total cost of operations for all the county programs for three months. We have a little bit more than that, 35%, and the local government commission requires us to give at least 8%. And 8% is basically one month's worth of expenditures, and no county our size would keep only one month's worth of expenditures in their account. And so county commissioners several years ago made the decision to set our fund balance at 25%, which would give us at least three months' worth of operating revenue. The problem we have is that county money doesn't come in in weekly, monthly sums. It comes in at different times of the year, when the tax bills go out, right before the tax bills go delinquent, and once a month when the sales tax comes in and so forth. So we haven't had much cash flow. That's one of the main reasons you need to have a good, strong fund balance, that there are always emergencies and things like that that pop up as you had to count it on, and that's the safety net for the county. In the budget, there's also, I won't go through all of those, but we have a nomenclature on our revenue and expenditure categories, and the projected question about that we'd be glad to answer. We also have the same information for our expenditures to explain what those are in the budget. It's always talking about fund balance available and appropriated. That terminology gets kicked around from time to time. We take a few minutes to address that. We try to maintain a stable fund balance that meets that goal of keeping at least 25% in the fund balance, 25% of our operating budget in fund balance. This is by and important in order to keep Bacon County financially prepared and fiscally sound. Our policy is, and should always be, on to appropriate fund balance to cover capital or one-time discretionary expenses, not be used for regular continuing operational expenses. If you do that, your fund balance just won't be there in a short period of time. So we usually earmark that for specific items that are either capital or one-time discretionary expenses. So if we had to cut those out, we could do that, but do operate for the most part. Fund balance, fund balance available is a statutory concept that describes the amount of funds that local governments have that are available to be appropriated in the coming year. It's essential that for ad verum tax-living units like municipalities and counties, that they maintain an adequate amount of fund balance available to meet their needs, as I said, in terms of cash flow, and also when there are revenue cycles and when outflows exceed inflows, this ensures that the unit can meet their current obligations and prevent the county or the unit from experiencing some cash flow difficulties. The local government commission, as I mentioned, requires that on June 30th each year, which is the end of our fiscal year, that you maintain at least 8% of prior year's expenditures as a fund balance. North Carolina counties have historically maintained fund balance levels well above 8% mark. It's a cushion against unexpected expenditures, emergencies, or perhaps declines in revenues. Bond rating agencies reinforce the notion that fund balance should be above 8% and that higher levels are required for sound financial management. The higher balance is often necessary because the available fund balance many times includes restricted amounts, such as sales tax, that is restricted, for example, for school capital outlay, or funds that are set aside for debt service. If you're using the 8% fund balance as a target rather than as an absolute minimum, that may have devastating effects on the fiscal health of North Carolina counties. Across the state, the average fund balance amounts maintained by counties has been fairly consistent throughout this economic turndown. Counties have responded to the economic turndown by reducing their budgets and to avoid depleting their fund balance. Many counties have actually reduced expenditures through layoffs, burlows, and service reductions. In addition, some counties have actually had to raise taxes and fees in order to maintain their financial stability. The boards have made, their boards have made some difficult choices to maintain good fiscal health in North Carolina. Local governments seek to achieve, North Carolina has a good reputation for good, sound financial management. That's why our state's bond rating is, is one of the highest in the country. Maintaining a strong fund balance is a prudent force for counties, especially during these uncertain economic times. Depleting fund balance could result in the county being forced to raise property taxes in order to meet essential or vital needs of our citizens. Some of the other highlights in the proposed budget, one question that always pops up is tax assessment, tax revaluation. I know that's a hot topic probably up here, because a lot of the tax base in Bacon County comes from the Highlands area, and everybody knows that. We appreciate that. But property revaluation process is now underway. It must be completed on the books by January 2015. Much of this work is going to be accomplished over the next 12 to 18 months, and so there'll be a lot more activity this next year than you've seen so far. Beginning July 1st this year, there's going to be a new process in place by the North Carolina Department of Motor Vehicles. It's going to require that your property taxes, both city and county, be paid at the time you renew your license plate. North Carolina is one of the last counties, one of the last states in the nation to do this, but that's effective this coming July. Obviously, that's going to take some time to adjust to. It's going to be that potentially, local governments will collect basically 100% of the property taxes on their automobiles. Right now, ours is below 90%. If you look at our charts, we're probably collecting somewhere around 84 or 85% each year of the taxes due on automobiles. In regard to information technology, computers, and so forth, the proposed budget reflects our need to expand our capabilities to retrieve and retain additional data associated with all our county departments. This means we need to continue to invest in new hardware and new software accordingly. Public safety continues to be a top priority in the county budget, with the acquisition of this year in the proposed budget of two new ameluses for our AMS service and five new patrol vehicles for the sheriff's office. There are no new county positions included in the proposed budget. We have allowed some funds in the capital outlay budget for the schools, for some related school safety improvements. And we had actually in the budget process request for 16 new positions of a variety of departments, but we have not included any of them in the proposed budget due to limited resources this year. Doesn't mean we don't need them, which just means that we just don't have the money to fund them. We've been notified also that the airport has been approved for additional FAA funding, as I mentioned earlier, and that will require local management. When that's official, that'll be brought from the county commissioners in the last two, they make a decision on local funding for that airport improvement project out there, but that's not in this budget either. The county school project that was started on this area is separated from the economic development budget in order to better identify expenditures related to that particular project. The budget does include a new heating and cooling system for that building. The new system will reduce the energy costs there, and we expect to see a payback in two to three years, depending on how much higher fuel prices go. Higher the fuel price goes, the sooner it's going to pay back. But the system that was there was antiquated and very inefficient, so we're prepared to replace that in the coming year. The transit, our transit system budget, we had a separate item for elderly and handicapped transportation in the past, and that's been rolled into the regular operational budget for the transit departments for next year. Our soil conservation service, you can see a big jump in that. It's not because they get a lot of extra money, but they did get a grant from Duke Power this year, $37,050, and it'll be expended in the next year's budget, but will not have a dramatic effect on their continuing operation. The health department budget includes the regional transformation grant, which is a grant that our health department has coordinated for all western counties. This year's budget accounts for $570,000, and that money, that's not all coming from Bacon County, it's not all going to be in the health department. We're coordinating that. We have to show attention to revenue and expense, and that money will be passed through after permanent effect on the health department budget. There is a small contribution to the community care plan. We did have a request for $50,000, and at the recommended budget, we're beginning with an amount of $10,000. The social services budget contains a million, $460,000 in past three months for daycare payments for providers in Bacon County that used to be paid directly by the state government. Last year, they decided to send the money through the county, the county to pay those expenses. That does not increase our revenue, does not increase anything but our work, and making sure that those daycare facilities get that money. So it looks like our budget was inflated by almost $1.5, but that's actually just state tax refunds that we have to be responsible for. Should be pointed out that the grants for the health and social services account amount to a little over $2 billion. And without the transformation grant and the past three months for the daycare operations, our overall budget would be considerably less. Fontana Regional Library operates our library in both in Franklin and here in the Highlands. The Fontana Regional Library system has been suffering several years without any increase, and we do have a 3.15% increase in funding for the regional library system for our Bacon County libraries here. In addition to the regular annual appropriation for recreation in Highlands, which has been a $495,000 each year for the last several years, the proposed budget does include $250,000, which the, which will be matched by the town of Highlands, which will represent a joint effort between the county and the town to replace the smoke pool that eats it really bad. Mr. Frye, I'm sure you will agree with that. The big thing in the budget, education, and I'm sure a lot of folks here tonight are wondering what's going to happen with the education budget for this next year. The past five years, Bacon County has made an enormous commitment to our local education system in terms of capital needs, and that's demonstrated in this budget report showing that the capital improvements for East Franklin, at the intermediate school, property purchase for the intermediate school, renovation of the Natahala, the Auto Valley School, Franklin High School improvement, the Highlands School improvement, information technology for the schools in the Highlands renovation. In the past five years, this is going to account for over $45.5 billion in investment in the county for school facilities. I think that's fixed well for the board in making sure that facilities are there. The primary responsibility of facilities is the county's primary responsibility for operating schools really belongs to the state. Our local school system is facing a crisis this year in terms of our current operational expense. The primary responsibility, as I said, of counties is to provide adequate school facilities, and the primary responsibility for the state is to fund the operational expenses of those schools. Over the past couple of years, school systems have tried to maintain an operational level created by stimulus funding and what I would call erratic state funding. This year's county funding recommendation in the proposed budget is a 3% increase in current expense and a capital outlay appropriation of $199,035. The fiscal year 13, 14, current expense, capital outlays, solid waste, and teacher supplement in total in the budget proposed is $7,819,986. The debt for our public school debt is $5,660,676. Looking at the total general fund budget, as I mentioned earlier, $46.6 billion. School funding actually represents around 29% of our total county budget. We collect about $25.4 billion in property taxes. As a percent of property taxes, the amount that the county is currently putting in in the proposed budget equating to the property taxes is about 53 cents out of every tax dollar. So we did a little chart, and I don't have it on overhead, but it's available on the budget showing school funding from 2007 up to 2013. You'd see when you look at this that the '07, '08 county appropriation to Bacon County schools was just a little over $6 million, $6,010,000. The total, and then the school actually appropriated that year about $239,000, along with the county funds and other revenues, for a total expenditure of a little over $8.2 billion. And they had a fund balance at that time of $1.6 billion. In '09, the county appropriated a $90,000 increase in the school current expense budget from '07, '08 to '08, '09, and that appropriation was $6,911,000. That, along with other funds, give total revenues of $8.8 billion, and currently, my current expense that year was about $8.35 million. And so the school was able to increase their fund balance by $486,000 that year for a total of $218,000. And '09, '10, the same appropriation was from the county of $6.9 billion. And that year, the school was able to increase their fund balance by $900,000 for a total of $3 million. But after that, it gets kind of rough, because in, in 2010 and 11, the, the annual county appropriation for current expense was reduced by 1%, like every other item in the budget was that year, down to $6.7 million. And the school board had to appropriate a little over $98,000 fund balance, the outbalance of the budget that year. That left with a fund balance of about $10.9 billion. Then, '11, '12, the same $6.7 billion was appropriated, and the school had to appropriate about $1,646,000 from their fund balance to cover a current expense increase of $10,180,000, which left a billion to $184,000 under budget. And the '12, '13 budget that we're in now, it's not completed yet, of course, but the $6.9 billion was put back in the budget. Expenditures are estimated to be $8.9 billion, and the school had to appropriate a billion, $137,000 in their fund balance to help cover the additional costs of current expense, pretty much wiping out the fund balance that the school board has been able to accumulate since then. The proposed budget earmarks $7,118,330 in current expense, along with some other funds. And based on our discussions with the school board, it looks like their current expense estimated at this point in time is just a little over $9,160,000. The state appropriates money, and the state is taking away money. And we've been going through these reversions for several years now. We have in this current year, proposed year, I think about a $25 billion planning a lot of our planning allotment for the schools and a billion ninety-six thousand dollar reversion in there, and so that's going to take them down based on what we know right now to twenty-four million three hundred ninety-three thousand dollars in state funding for this coming year. Looking at the, at the expenses and the revenues as they are, without a reduction in the expense portion of the education budget, we're looking at a shortfall of one point three five five million dollars. Now, in order to fund that with additional revenue, it would take a tax increase of a penny and a half to generate that much revenue. In order to fund essential county services and meet the county's debt service obligation on county projects, maintain critical needs in education, public safety, we've had to make some decisions and recommendations that prioritize, and in many cases, reduce departmental and agency budget requests for this year. There are many work in progress, commendable projects and programs and services that have merit and still need to be funded and are implemented, but have not been included in this budget proposal due to lack of additional revenue. The original improved general fund budget for this year, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, was forty-four million three hundred ninety-one thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars. And due to containment contracts, grants, additional revenue, and so forth, the revised budget for this year is now forty-eight million seven thousand nine ninety-seven, and those are, that's, that's reflected because of one-time grants and so forth that will come back down as it always does. And I say, as I said earlier, the proposed general fund budget for the fiscal year coming up, July first, is sub-recommended at forty-six million six hundred forty-three thousand seven hundred sixteen dollars, which is less than the revised budget before, and the budget that started out prior to here. County general fund operating budgets balanced within existing revenues. The goal set by the Board of County Commissioners in January was to create a balanced budget without tax increase, no property increases, no property tax increases reflected or requests in this proposed budget. We have reduced requests for capital outlay. We have trimmed other expenses where feasible, and our goal has been over the past five years is to try to maintain current level of services without additional county staff. We've been able to do that by leaving non-critical positions unfilled throughout county departments. We'll continue to fill all of those essential positions when they become vacant. Our county employees that work hard to do their job, and they continue to help us hold line on spending on delivering essential county services. Macon County is indeed fortunate to have such dedicated and devoted employees. The board earlier this year implemented a new classification pay plan, and I would say to you, Board of Commissioners, if your county employees are very grateful for the board's action in bringing our entry level salaries up to minimum recruitment levels and adjusting fair compensation based on the market rate. Our self-funded insurance program needs to remain strong, would not increase rates for employee dependent coverage in several years, and I think that's due to the fact that our claims experience has been very favorable. We're not proposing an increase in employee cover uses at this time. Now, to do this would sacrifice Macon County's grandfather status and result in a total higher cost for the county coverage because of dependence of the Affordable Care Act. If you increase rates more than five percent, you lose that grandfather status, and you're going to end up paying more in the long run. So what I recommend is that this will be reviewed again between now and January two thousand fourteen, and if adjustments need to be, need to be made, they can be considered at that time when there is full implementation of the federal Affordable Care Act, and we'll see what happens when that comes around. Every year, county strives to improve our facilities, provide and maintain services while we recruit, retain qualified employees, and our goal has been on improving quality of service for our citizens and our visitors too. We're committed to maintaining the county's leadership position in western North Carolina. Macon County has a reputation of being a forward-thinking progressive county that seeks to improve the quality of life while carefully balancing the needs of our citizens and the tax burden they are asked to bear. I believe this proposed county budget reflects that commitment. A full and complete list of line detail has been prepared to give us a thorough breakdown for each expenditure, appropriation, and revenue source. The state is still facing a budget crisis. The General Assembly is still in session, as we heard today, and we are concerned that the state could possibly shift additional responsibilities or reduce county funding to create a protective budget situation. We hope they will not do that, but we have been, and we have been reassured by our legislators that the state will not balance their budget on the backs of counties this year. They seem to be trying to hold that pledge in most respects. I'm cautiously optimistic, to say the least. Funding for all outside agencies in our special appropriations budget remains at the currently appeared level, and so Chairman and Commissioners, the proposed budget for Macon County for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, as required by state statute, is balanced with revenues and expenditures of forty-six million six hundred forty-three thousand seven hundred sixteen dollars, and is hereby submitted for your review and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Jim, we can discuss as much as we need to. I don't know about you, I need some time to go through this. I think we wasted a lot of time. We could throw out some talk at this point, if that's okay, but I may need time to review it, and I would suggest we grab our calendar and log around this and let's set some dates and workshops we can get and have some meeting discussions about this. Do you want to start later this week? Do you want to maybe look for the first day of the week? I would think we'd need, let's go on a fair compensation, probably three. Anyway, we'll do two anyway.
What standard, is that not the, is that not?
It's two years, I think I'll do it in my third year. You've got different ways. Usually, even, we have met on Saturday, you know, we spend some time. Most of the rest is off on Saturday, we're not circling that.
Saturday or a night, but just on Monday.
And that just gives us some time for some good discussion. What about, you might want to meet later this week, or you want to maybe say next Tuesday's a regular meeting night, or you want to make try Tuesday night and see how far we get?
Is that the other's or the other's?
I was going to say, I'm not prepared to discuss at this point, I think you guys just got it too. What about next Tuesday night at six? That may be okay.
Our public hearing is June eleventh. Is that, does that mean we've been up a couple weeks since we were supposed to get this last Tuesday?
Public hearing has to be scheduled no, no less than ten days, no more than twenty days, so whatever.
So we got one way on the public hearing that works?
If we've got my Macon boardroom next year, I'm just suggesting that's a thrown-out date. I'm just looking at, we beat the twenty-eighth, let's go to retire, or go, can't do it according to what's left of more time we may need, and then we can come back, maybe on that Saturday, we can come back the following Tuesday, the fourth, we can still come back, you know, one or two days later than that week, we can still get that done. And we need to give Jack, if we're going to make some changes, we'd have to give Jack some time to get that done.
That's our regular working?
It's not, I just say Tuesday night is a regular time. We can start at five, can anybody be there at five?
Uh, like that rule stays the way I said. That's what time I like to rule stays in the beginning.
What time is it like? Okay, you're ready? Okay. Twenty-eight, twenty, twenty?
Oh, no.
I do.
I got your board. Okay. That's school board meeting.
That's school board meeting now?
Nantahala.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, bring that?
Sir, I'm sorry.
The twenty-eighth, is, is no regular scheduled meeting?
We are scheduled to meet at Nantahala School on the twenty-eighth, yes.
That is a regular scheduled school board meeting?
It is, we have one monthly, yes, which we already scheduled meeting for month of May, twenty-eighth.
Everybody wants to do that?
I see that's tomorrow, babe.
I work for Sam, I don't think that's him.
He's whack, you know, because we're certainly want the schools to come to work on our work section, I think, Chairman. But I was going to say, we don't have to necessarily discuss this, we've got a long budget. We probably don't have to, we don't have to do it that now, I think, ready is more if we be, how high interesting our budget discussion will be.
Macon will not be there.
But. Think we could just lose the thirtieth night? We can do that. I'm just saying, let's go ahead and make, let's go ahead and meet the twenty-eighth, and we just won't discuss the school budget in case you guys will be there for that, and then we'll maybe look at doing, doing it at that time.
Thirtieth?
Thirtieth? Everybody going to be around thirtieth?
Thirtieth.
Will we be available, Mr. Chairman?
We'll be available, of course, on the twenty-eighth. To be honest, we're going to be facing some very hard choices, so the sooner we have some idea, Mr. Chairman, to afford it, it will be most beneficial to us making our decisions in terms of what actions we will be taking for our budget next year, so I'm not trying to rush. Obviously, I think the sooner we know something, the better off it will be.
Well, just looking at the calendar, we, we need, I think, any one of us needs at least two weeks to review this, and if that means we start next Tuesday with something else, then we can discuss your budget on, on thirtieth night, and we aim to the thirtieth.
Mr. Chairman?
There is, I didn't mention it, but all our, all our departments have submitted budget requests, four or five of them, Mr. Chairman, they know, are asking for consideration for a tax adjustment, and that's probably going to take them on full work session, we can, our departments, we may want to take that into consideration.
Sure. I'm pressing, I haven't scheduled for fourteen, but I would change that.
Next Tuesday night?
We're on record schedule. I don't think we're supposed to have a public hearing. You did it on the twenty? Chairman?
I'm good. I can reschedule it.
Thirtieth, I think, thirtieth, six o'clock.
What I'm saying, listen, while we schedule, May, Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, six o'clock, five West Main Street, and then Thursday night, thirty?
Five thirty or six?
I'm sorry, five thirty, I believe, five thirty, on the twenty-eighth, and then it's six o'clock, if everybody's okay with that, on the thirtieth of the day, five West Main Street, right? Let's set up the Saturday, the first?
I can't do Saturday. I can't do Saturday, the first.
You can do Saturday, the first? It's good back.
You got that opportunity next week.
Now, I will throw this out, we, we do have, it's been, given not quite a week, we do have this Saturday, which is the twenty-fifth, we can throw in if we got a point, we can.
Mr. Chairman?
I said our superintendent will not be available on the thirtieth, he'll actually be out of town, so as far as the school system meeting with the elderly, correct the great shape, the thirtieth, it looks like it would be a real good day for us.
Okay. What about if we met on Saturday, the twenty-fifth, if you guys available, and do we want to do that?
We think we'll do it.
I'm fine.
There'll be, this, this gonna be Saturday?
Yes.
This Memorial Weekend, there'll be a lot of people to be out.
Okay. I will be, I will be. Are we going?
No, no, we'll be there all day. I can't, I can't concentrate on this all day.
Actually, no, I, I think, I would have more sessions to keep them to.
Sure. Give three hours. Seven o'clock, everyone?
Seven o'clock, everyone? All right, we're good, everybody's good for the twenty-eighth or thirtieth?
Mr. Chairman, if you go ahead and get on the twenty-eighth, maybe by that time, we'll know where people are, apart from reviewing this, and it will be a good time to get the rest of it, so.
If we do what now?
If you take, if you take the time to wait down to twenty-eighth, we get an answer on it. If you know how much more time you're going to do, then.
Great. I just, I just, I'm just going out options. All right, let's, let's meet, what, we meet the twenty-eighth and the thirtieth, let's go ahead and set that, and then when we meet on the twenty-eighth, we can look ahead and choose more days.
Chairman, you'll go five thirty on the thirtieth?
Five thirty, five thirty on the twenty-eighth? That is thirty. It matters nothing, we, Paul, can you do five thirty on the thirtieth?
Should be.
Okay, we're getting, we're just making five thirty on both days, and let's go ahead and schedule those two, and.
Do you know what parts of the budget you'll be talking about either of those days as far as the school board goes or the higher tax? Do you know which days we'll be focusing on what?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure at this point how far we would guess. I think we're probably looking at, I think the school board could not be there the twenty-eighth or the thirtieth, so I think we're probably not allowed to do it then. But I'm not sure if we can, how far we get with the rest of it. What about, do we want to look for the first week of June and go ahead and, Jack, you said that Saturday, the first is out, or always that they have a strategy there, so we'll go ahead and do that. So you want to look at the fourth, let's maybe let that be when we talk about the school budget, Mr. Chairman, or June fourth?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
June, June fourth, Tuesday.
I think, anytime the first week of June, he will be here, so we will make work for whatever day, as soon as you tell, we'll make.
If we go ahead and say we're going to meet then, are we all good for that?
Good. June the fourth.
That'd be glad, too.
Yes.
But these are all priorities, Chairman, you just have to set that, we'll be there.
Well, I think we need to go ahead and set that, everybody seems okay with that, and we'll go ahead and, let's just do it at five thirty, we're doing all the, the other.
But you've been on this late, so I'm late at that. So I've got sorts of moving on these, but I got late.
Agreed, agreed. All right, we'll go ahead, Mr. Managers, is that going to work with you and Lori?
Work for me. Lori, that'll be like the, I'll just like, I have to go ahead and set my notes.
Okay, we'll set it. Okay, we're going to set the twenty-eighth of May, Tuesday, twenty-eight, five thirty, five West Main Street, thirtieth, the thirtieth of May, five thirty P.M., five West Main Street, and then Tuesday, June the fourth, and let's go ahead and designate that for schools, we're going to discuss, minimum, we're going to discuss schools, maybe more, and Commissioner Tate, one of the fire departments, designate one of those. You, Jack, determine, we've got to go through all of it, it doesn't matter. Go ahead, we got those three states, you got, you got that.
I'm just going to take one, we'll make the schedule.
You'll tie that on Thursday, Jimmy, is that going to be ready?
Yep, they're ready.
That's it, yeah, we'll be there.
You'll tie that, Mr. Chairman, instead of the third part with snow, I think that's fine.
Thirtieth.
But if that's, that's not going to be photo, we need to do it all, so just make sure we have in there one of those, just manage to report that with Commissioner Tate. Jim, all that's clear? Any other discussion due to budget or whatever you want to say?
I'd just like to say thank you to the county manager and Lori and all the work we've put into this budget. It's not an easy process, it's, and I think, I think it's been a good budget, Mr. Chairman. Man, we appreciate all the work. By the time we get done with it, we'll haggle, we'll haggle, we'll haggle, you know, split everything.
Well, there's a lot of people who put a lot of work in, we have, we've well, of all our county departments and agencies and so forth, they probably spent hours already putting in this budget, I don't get the time that you all spend on it, so it's, it's pretty thorough process, and I think if we're able to, look at less, they probably do a little bit better job.
Appreciate it.
Do you think I'll, Chairman? We'll be all the better. Under whole business, Commissioner Teague, with your question, some discussion about the Nantahala Lake, the Forest Service put in some policy.
Couple of people, this is a project that was started prior to me being on board. Two residents, Nantahala, had asked what position the board is, they pay, and Tom Ritter doing architectural drawing, up to the post parking lot, and Ben McWilton, the Forest Service, and he says that the county has to play some role, Winchester, you're the legal guy, I'll just say. In this project, if we propose, I don't know where you guys stand on individual, if you're going to pull it up, I just told that brings it forward.
I, I personally, for pursuit, I think, find that exactly.
If you talk to his company, only if company's working for the three years, because he's more knowledgeable than anybody I know, sir.
But he's not here?
No.
You talk, I'll, I'll.
I talked to Edward Crawford, and he's talked to Mike Wilton.
They've all called this. They've called me, I talked to him, too.
Okay.
I don't know where the Forest Service really stands though. Remember, I'll, who I was there, remember that time we talked about Lake, Lake sort of, I'll do a bit there.
General Statute forty-seven thirty, which is served by your requirement for play. So we just cleaned that up a little bit. Page twenty-three, subdivision, uh, you notice under homeowner's association, one fifty-nine, point six-one, we added one one cents there, it's going to go up in the owner's association. It says, homeowner's association shall be responsible for the maintenance and control of recreational facilities, common space, and we added shared well water systems, community set systems, which looks like the subdivision road within the road. We found that in the process, we were requiring the association to maintain the roads, pools, common spaces, not necessarily the day-to-day uses of the property. The last sentence on page twenty-three and one fifty-nine, sixty-three, we discussed removing amendment block size for lots that are provided with water and sewer or the community water Finally, under, uh, page twenty-four, under one fifty-nine, sixty-four, the road standards, there was a very complicated definition of the connection of the building requirements that had been made. The NCPT specs, all the language about meeting the NCPT specs for backfill materials and paving and all that, basically clean that up and allowed it to say, all fill materials shall be stabilized in deployments with generally accepted engineering standards. What we're doing there is allowing the standards to change, and we're also allowing the engineers to provide those standards. And then, of course, vegetation has not been cut, nor renewed, or disturbed, should not be covered or bedded, that's general plan, this is the road control order. And then, the last sentence of our mission is if qualified, a qualified professional determines compliance. So we require, the subdivision administrative require compliance and certification in fact of some design information. Just come to that a little bit. And then, if you're going to draft the documents, you're reviewing, there's a lot of dramatic changes and a lot of stuff that we just changed, that's the change.
Thank you, man. I think both of us have talked to you, knowing yourself and Chester, through the process or latest observation taken, and, uh, this, this was, these changes were recommended unanimously by the county board, that's right. I just heard that we'd like to maybe take some more of these duties, it's going to be a big deal, we put this on our June, we got a lot of the budget, we'd rather try to jump in and decide where the path, I'm okay with it, I think we've done a good job, and I think these are needed changes, you make things easier for a lot of people without sacrificing their environment and whatever, uh, so I really am okay with it. My recommendation would be for us to take this and put it on the agenda for a June meeting, give us time.
We have to call, we have to call a, a committee to do that.
Right.
And, um, get, you can go ahead and get that advertised.
Let's do that for the June, just do it up here, June meeting, discuss it again.
We'll have to get out. You're here for June, all this, Chester?
I have. And you're okay with it?
The changes that have been proposed, I have approved, we made a few minor, uh, adjustments, didn't change substance, it just changed the main, something to say, and amplified the way something was said, and there was a technical point that I saw missing in the unit that probably shouldn't have been included.
I think you did a good job, man.
I do, man, I've done the whole planning board, I know what you've done, I bet I might watch.
We thought, thought, thought a few times.
Yeah, you've done a great job, I thank you a lot.
Commissioner Tate, you're, you're, yeah, I'm back in the script, okay? So, uh, that is not the thing, uh, I'll give you something fourteen, is that right?
There you go. The record, the meeting is due in the eleventh.
That's, that's, that's public hearing right now, too, but, uh, we don't have to public hearings, same as, sure.
Thanks.
Right now, we have scheduled June eleven, public hearing, public hearing, put on, how did, how did you want to change that?
I think you have a third one in June before the meeting.
I think, of course, they can order that one next May meeting.
I have a problem with that, I don't, I don't think this will be.
He says that, please. I say, nobody says, don't do, the budget will be leveled, nobody says, we can't, we couldn't do, in no meeting, do this, what do you think? Okay? You'd rather, you'd rather do?
Don't know. You never know, only public hearings, people show up, anybody show up for budget, I don't know, people never know, so, uh.
Well, we got lots of new.
I imagine there, there probably going to be, uh, pretty good turnout this year for public hearing, so, uh, it's up to you.
All we do is our July meeting.
Thank you. The justice, it's been a while now, so.
It's been this way for a long time, this way. Okay. Chester, if you would, just make note, we're going to take this up, let's have a public hearing at our July meeting. I'll get the notes together. Thank you. Thanks, man, appreciate you, man, you're welcome. Uh, we have a request for the establishment of a cemetery board in county, and, uh, I think Chester can have some information.
I did.
On that.
Uh, I had prepared resolutions to establish, just kind of went out and handed it out. Establish more trustees for, uh, public managed cemeteries. General Statute.
Say what?
Yeah. Hold up, do a present, do our, don't hear it, nothing.
General Statute, authorize the board county commissioner to establish more trustees to oversee abandoned public cemeteries as provided for under General Statute sixty-five, dash, one thirteen, specifically, uh, provide for making county commissioners to have the ability to, uh, basically delegate, uh, and instruct the board trustees to take care of substantial duties that this board has under the provisions of General Statute sixty-five, dash, one eleven, and you'll note in the resolution, those duties are specified, uh, those duties that commissioners have. Uh, I'm recommending that you go ahead and establish more trustees with that public cemetery in accordance with General Statute sixty-five, dash, one thirteen, and to, uh, basically establish just to be a five member of board trustees, assert that your will and to impose upon those trustees, uh, the, uh, obligation to, uh, fulfill the obligations of commissioners that are required up from sixty-five, dash, one eleven. In addition, I'm recommending that you give that board trustees the ability to accept gifts and donations for purpose of upkeep and beautification of abandoned public cemeteries as provided in this resume, handle those matters in a physically responsible way and set forth in this resume.
Okay. I, I would certainly agree with their attorney that he do this and establish this, we can appoint members to this later, Chester, that, right?
Yeah, I, I think it would be appropriate to first establish the board, that you are going to have responsibility to, behind a board trustees, I felt like five was the appropriate number, uh, I think the policy of the county is to give notification that you, uh, need service and.
And typically, what we've done is give these thirty days notice, so I think it'd be appropriate, if we approve this, then we advertise, we look at board members, and we give it, that would be probably till our July meeting, uh, and then we, I know, I've already had representative to meet.
We're looking for a motion on it, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. I'm glad that you're going to be there.
Is this for any and all public managed cemeteries in the county, or just those that are identified by the board?
It's, this will be for any and all.
Do we know how many there are?
We don't, and indeed, that's one of the responsibilities of the county commissioners, is to catalog those things, and, uh, this committee or this board trustees will be charged with the responsibility of putting that list together.
And we've got two really qualified people that have mentioned me so far, if I can be honest, and, uh, but we need to advertise that, give, to give people proof, and I, I would, I would entertain a motion if we approve this, this resolution, asserting abandonment of cemeteries.
Absolutely.
So we have a motion, we've got a second, we have a motion, Commissioner Tate, a second by Tate, any discussion? Here you're done, I'll favor the motion, the second I'm saying aye. Vote that is established, Chester, and you would please, uh, on the county website and otherwise, my advertising, we're looking for folks to, this board.
A five, a group.
Correct.
Servant will, if we want, have specific terms.
Okay. Uh, Jack, we have the, uh, the log evidence, the bid for the computer, this is money that's already been set aside and established, but we do have a bid for your hardware to make the sanction.
Yes. As you can see in your agenda pack, that, um, because of the dollar amount of the purchase, we had to follow, you know, the proper purchasing policies, had to go out for formal bid, was there purchasing four hundred and eighty-four desktop computers? The low bid was Encore Technology, I'm sorry. Encore, no, it was actually, uh, Piper Creek, sorry, I was reading another line, line there, Piper Creek Consulting, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars for the standard floor tax, so we just need, uh, a motion and a second for you guys to approve, we're working that bid. To date, they've spent about half a million of the one and a half million we borrowed, so of course with this, you know, we'll be pushing eight hundred thousand mark probably by year end of the purchase, and then, it's been working well, you know, the IT, school IT has been working with our IT department and our purchasing department, so it's been working really well.
So, Lori, is this part of the staggered purchases we talked about?
Yes, this is part of the one and a half million.
So this is, this, how many purchases is this?
Well, like I said, we've already purchased a half a million dollars, so this is about three hundred thousand, just rounding it, and so we'll be up to eight hundred thousand mark probably by year end, which is about half of the money.
So each time we, we could be buying from different people?
Yes, we sure have, we've bought some from Dale, because, you know, they've made some smaller purchases, they bought, uh, let's see here, it left me in the system.
I mean, we just want to make sure that all these people has the same warranties.
Yeah, we bought from Gov Connection, Encore Technology, just, you know, different, and the way that the school ITs, they work on our IT department, from what I understand, is they're buying them as they have the staff to put them in the schools, you know, that's what we talked about before, we didn't want to just buy them and sit in the warehouse, you know, and let the warranties expire, so they are ordering as they can deploy them.
And these different companies have the same warranty?
Uh, I would think.
It's specific. They're probably different companies, but some of our desktops, some of our iPads, some of our, our servers, so there's, there's different warrants on there, but, and once the, our, our, our IT is pretty good, I, uh, all the details of these coordinates, that we state with the school folks, and we do upfront, and it'll take about two years to fully implement them all there.
And just, uh, for clarification, I guess for Commissioner Tate, if we did this nine, eight, nine months ago, uh, set aside the money, the reason we're having to go back and vote is because we didn't actually write a check?
It was because of the amount, if, if the amount, if the amount of the purchase is over its threshold, it has to be formally bid, that's why this item is going to be on now.
But this is all under the, uh, amount of the despot?
It's all within, on the board's.
It's already budgeted.
That loan is closed?
Yes, loan is closed.
Not a debate on just a matter of what.
The board commissioners have to, yeah.
The board, if it's over, what's, what's the threshold?
Uh, I think for this type of purchase, I, I don't want to quote, I'd be wrong, I would.
Let's just say, for example, threshold is fifty thousand dollars, you have to go through the formal bid process, which means sealed bids, advertised, and all that.
We do it, or Board of Education?
We do it.
Can't Board of Education do that?
No, we do it, we, we maintain that responsibility for the county.
On the loan?
We have to, other commissioners on the money to be able to do that, so, they, they coordinate as far as what they need, what they want, what their IT plan is, coordinate that with our IT people, and then we use our purchasing to, uh, the formal bids, and then the formal bids on specific items that they.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, Piper Creek Consulting with tax info for next purchase on, on these computers, we have a credit cap of two eighty-nine, nine oh three, fifty-four.
We have a second.
Authorize the execution of the contract in court.
Authorize execution, contract, this exactly what you.
We have motion back, Commissioner Beal has said, back, Commissioner Tate, we've seen a lot of two thousand dollars in, in the next bid. Next bid on that. Quite, yes, it was, around thirteen, a little, thirty thousand or so. Any other discussion? All the favor of Lori for the bid, as stated, second I'm saying aye, vote, that motion passes. Thank you, Lori. Uh, Jack, the, uh, county airport?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, the, uh, the airport's in the process of trying to, there's an anchor space out there, and I'm glad that that basis here, because it's, because it helps work through some of the issues, in order, part of that area, the airport, it's a flood zone, in order to be able to, uh, to build in there, and build, uh, another anchor, it's going to require, uh, an engineering study, and a no rise certification, uh, they have, uh, local engineers, so likely, and local surveyors who are willing to do that, we think that it's going to be around ten thousand dollars, when we've asked for about twelve, up there twelve, and maybe some, some additional funds. What the airport authority is doing is basically asking the board to upfront this money, they get a grant each year from the state, the, uh, state department, branch of the, ABA division, the general grant, if they can use for things like this, they're asking the board county commissioners to upfront twelve thousand dollars as a loan, and then we repay back to county in September when they get the reimbursement.
Okay, do you have a question for clarification, uh, question, man? How do you, the board, the airport authority, what relationship does county management have with the airport authority?
The airport authority is a separate party, contractors of the airport authority are appointed by the county commissioners.
And they are, how, they, they control the airport, they own the airport?
Everything, they live, they have power with everything inside the fence, so the contract for the no rise certification has to be appointed, the airport authority and the engineering, and so they're asking for lots of bid for contract equipment, engineer, do the no rise certification to, to bid used to profit for the, for the private hangar.
And they will be getting, read through the works of that private hangar. Now, is that hangar gold, where it's paved already?
No, this, this is the proposed area for the state, you're saying, and where the existing hangers are.
Well, that's paved, that's.
It'll be, it'll be, it'll, it'll have to be paved up to the front door of the hangers of the.
It is now. Have you seen it yet?
Yeah.
Why we gotta do it, all of a sudden gotta do a no rise if we?
We've also said, because this is one of the federal bureaucratic, maybe, the county has a flood zone map, and that area was delineated last time we did a flood map, hazard map for the county, meanwhile, it showed that area in a flood prone area, in order to do that and not, and not violate your federal flood insurance program for the entire county, if you could, this, to establish that it will not cause an increase in water back up so much so far up and, uh, above and below this.
That's their cost, that's their cost, yes.
And Matt could probably explain it better than I do, because he does it, but, uh, actually, uh, the hot thing about this one, as you well know, Paul, is that the flood hazard map is top, is probably eight hundred feet above this particular piece of property, but we have to do it in order to get the certification, uh, for him to be able to build, a lot of cannot issue a bill for that.
It may be appropriate or inappropriate, whoever's, whoever's written the benefits off of this hangar, we are, are we?
Well, uh.
Money directly, rental fees, my question, I want to set you up, my question is, is if the airport authority or the private guy?
There, there is a private entity who's willing to pay for the construction of the hangar, but they can't build it and pay for that, the airport authority does not have the money to build a hangar, and so, private entity is willing to build a hangar, house their very, very expensive jet.
That we collect taxes on.
That we would get taxed on if they can get a hangar put out there, they can't, they don't have the money to build a hangar, but they have the property, and if they can, uh, allow the property, uh, individually build a hangar, they will actually lease property to them for that hangar for X number of years, and get some return on their money from that.
This airport authority down to twelve thousand, but, uh.
They don't, that's why they're asking for the county to, to, to front the money, and that reimburse the county in September when they get.
They're asking for a loan.
That's what it is.
Send this letter, then reflect that, so, we'll go in this letter, it says, it's recently been discovered that portions of the airport brought to locate a flood park. What recently discovered, I mean, it's, you know, I'm just reading one sale of this letter here.
Well, uh, that, that's what it is.
Yeah, and it says it's a, it's a, it's a hangar for private airplanes, I think, for private airplanes, the airport authority should fund that versus taxpayers.
And they will, they'll, a hundred dollars, they.
That's guaranteed that we didn't pay that money.
Yeah, yeah, they, they get, they get so much money from the state, the state, the department, each year, we use for airport assistance, that they spend out there, they could use that money for this study, but they don't have that money on hand at this time, they're willing, the county's willing to upfront the money, they're willing to, want to reverse that to that, they did give the state money in September.
Already come out of the, in the, in the town. It says, but in this one, see, I didn't say it, they said it is potential, you know, if, if, if this is the law of airport authority, I don't have a problem.
That's what it is.
Is that, is that maybe we give them twelve thousand dollars for the no rise study? Do we have second?
Board, desire any sort of, uh, simple interlotion agreement to promote the life of that money?
I would think not to exceed, if Mr. Tate can agree, I'd love to second the motion if Mr. Tate can agree, adding not to exceed twelve thousand.
I saw that comes out of general monitor. Okay, we have motion second, uh, to essentially loan, uh, the twelve thousand dollars for the study, any, any further discussion on this? I would favor the motion to say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
I've got one question, for a long time, this is, this is, if this first comes back and causes that problem, if, when that comes, the problem, that's what the board?
You put that.
I guess. I expect you'll take your way.
In case when Mr. Tate comes back and he finds that, in the study, that portion of that property is the airport is, what might you say, when it comes to county, like the airport authority, some sort of big problem?
It's not going to cause them a problem, what it's going to do is put you down past future planning for airport, basically what it's going to do down lies everything up the problem with that, that probably sixty, seventy percent of airport is currently in flood lane, or floodway, and it's surprising how much fire that's out of there, but, I'm level ground, once we do the study, what it will determine is whether or not the hangar space can be built in the local design standards that we've got to, and ultimately will find the future development.
We've got the last question, we're going to do, so I think it's branch, last question, I'm going to ask.
Any other discussion? I would favor the motion, second I'm saying aye, aye, vote. We can, I have a question, they didn't sign the hour, we've got, we've got maybe just, unless we get hung up, we've probably got another fifteen minutes, I, if we can, if we can take a quick break, take a five minute break, we'll come back, yeah. We had the second question. Oh, okay. You, you make that up, you say. All right, I hope everybody had a good rest, uh, I'll be back for the next item, uh, and I guess Jack asked me to do this since the Southwest Commission, regional vision getter, uh, they asked the chairman of the Southwest, the Southwest County is one involved in the, the Southwest Commission, have been since the nineteen forties, it's a organization, it's the counties and the municipalities in the Southwest County, uh, they called us together to sort of explain, uh, what this was, and it helps to understand where something came from. The Federal Highway Administration, as you know, there was a proposal, it's several many years old, to build a highway that was partially being constructed, uh, through Gray County, it was never completed due to environmental issues, that kind of thing, order paid with, uh, never completed, the Federal Highway Administration and the Northern Carolina Department of Transportation under Governor Rory, uh, asked for this, uh, sort of a regional study, we had no regulation involved in it, that kind of thing, you see the fact sheet that's in there, uh, they intend to gather information from all Southwest counties, uh, part of this is a, uh, transportation plan for, I believe, it's Gray and Wayne County, that we bought that highway, Jack, uh, and, and, and you see the fact sheet, this, and they, they, they asked the chairman of boards, there were a few other folks that were there, with representative towns, had a meeting, I, I think, three weeks ago, Jack, like, I'm on the front, sure, we're, 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 if you want to come back for some future meeting, give us a big deal, uh, yeah, on that, if you're looking to, if you can, uh, you go to their side, it's definitely, but, come back sometime, we can, we can, we can. So that, that's pretty much what that is, is that's the only thing for us, of course, this is the funding commission by the Federal Highway Administration and Northern Carolina DOT, so, either one of us, the chairman, that you think that's why it's been held up over forty years, this has been going on for forty years, so, we're going to try it again, but this time, we hope it, it goes. The, uh, next item, uh, is, we dropped everything, Commissioner Tate, that's what the secretary of office will be adding back, so, we can take it, we can take it this time, explain what, what that is about.
As you all heard from earlier tonight, we had several, uh, gentlemen here in the crowd that spoke to the, I don't know, along with the, for soccer fields in Highlands, uh, quite simply because we don't have ones, uh, we do have one here in Highlands, because the school uses, maintains, keeps, but it's, they reserve it for the school, only as sort of how it rounds, sort of like the Frankel football field at Frankel, so there's a dedicated, uh, soccer field up here. So, since I've, uh, became commissioner a couple of years ago, I've been working on a deal out of Zachary, uh, to finally make this happen, and I'm trying to give a little bit of a brief history, presently, this is the, uh, Little League Baseball Field, it's Zachary Field, and this is the parking lot, so presently, the county has this parcel and this parcel. Uh, several years ago, with hopes of expanding, the county had purchased this approximately one point seven acre parcel that's all by itself, uh, so what I have been able to do is to, uh, work out a, hopefully a transaction that this board is in agreement with it, where we would be trading this one point seven acres for this one point seven acres that actually joins our present Zachary Fields, and with this trade from the same person, we're hoping to be purchasing about another one point seven acres right here, and, uh, as a couple of gentlemen here mentioned earlier, big flat field area, we're hoping to get a soccer field in, which is very unheard of in Highlands, is this area right through Um, so I have been doing a little bit of due diligence on this to make sure, uh, we're moving in the correct direction, and the only true roadblock that I've met so far is I've had with vision water quality this week, uh, there is a spring pit which starts right here at this, I know you all can't see, but it's a little. Uh, there is a spring pit which starts right here at this. I know you all can't see it, but it's a little gray dot here. Where the old springhouse for the Zachary homes is, there's a creek that comes out of it and visual water quali- quality. Classified it as a perennial stream. So that means we can't pipe up and we're already going to have thirty foot setbacks on it, except for.
However, we used to, we just talked to me and we, with that, and.
Well, I'll, I'll opt you that. We can, um, according to them, I have a letter, we can't pipe over a hundred fifty feet of it, which we don't have to do, but it would be nice to do too. Matt's been working with me on this and, and I can't thank him enough for his time and expertise on it. Uh, he, he's come up with a couple of different options and I think both options, uh, it's showing four or five that use eight fields and a U twelve field, and they all can be combined for even a quarter, a quarter ten. Because, uh, General Zachings, according to our attorney, whenever a county swaps property, uh, for another people or life piece and has to come out and keep more value, Chester and we disclosed, we had had that, so we use a phrase.
Essentially, they make fairer swap. It doesn't have to be exactly.
So we had both parcels appraised. We got the one that the county manages now and the one we're open to swapping for, uh, appraised. And they've praised, but then three thousand dollars have each other's, so, uh, hopefully that, that will work out. And because we don't have the, we, we have a rough idea what this is worth, but because we don't have official survey on yet, we're, we're going to have to take, take an offer on it. So I'm hoping that tonight, uh, commissioners will, uh, set forth a little stunt survey for that parcel as well. It's advertised for the two parcels.
The blue line, that's a hundred fifty feet, hundred, what we have to be fifty?
Oh, what we did, we all squared it as an SP, below that's the spring hall. And what we did when I backed up this blue line, this creek running through the property, option one, first round, I gave you shows. That's the one where we're going to have to tap about a hundred forty feet. The yellow line is where we added parking, we just chose the color. Uh, there's going to be one full size field and four eight hundred field. The, uh, the second option, you can see we shift on the second map, we gave you the shift to fill up a little bit. Stay out, uh, for you don't have the pipe, but the buffer's going to be close enough. Let's do it the same amount of field. We could also put another field, put top of the spring hall down.
All right, the larger field, they both, those are regulated, that's a, that's a wide heap, sort of field that's smaller.
Big spires of regulation.
That's great. It's very, it's, it's on the twelve year regulation field, it's almost up. Four smaller fields for eight year run.
But the two, the two, the larger field is the same size?
Yes, yes, just friends different schedule. That U twelve field is three hundred by two hundred and ten, the other one on five and seven.
So in the way of legislation, take the local mitigation and pop, say somebody trying to stop it. Can you say how the truck thing would be taken? Do you remember that?
I, I, I took one, uh, give you a little bit of information, same contractor, the Highlands Soccer Field, so I was, uh, worded and said, as you might say, and he came in at around two hundred, two hundred and thousand, these are our buildings.
Probably not paint rock here.
Do you have some picture running here?
Those are, those, if we did decide to add those fields, which I'm sure would, but those would be the, the little kids' fields, the heat rate, regulations sized fields. Because that's fairly steep in here, those three fields, we have, whatever, they'd be, they'd be staggered on different elevations. So one field might be eight feet higher in elevation from one side. Those fields can also, the way they do it at the Bank County Soccer Club, how the industrial world is, big field run, they actually take those fields and turn the sideways on it. Any questions, public?
What the fields on these?
That's all. So what procedure, uh, Commissioner Tate, do you ask for the swap and the purchase?
Court, I'll let Chester ask that.
With respect to the, uh, swap, if, if you're inclined to do the swap, be a part of the parcel of the entire grant back, you need to publish a notice of intent to authorize a swap at your next regularly scheduled meeting, June eleventh. All you just need to do is, uh, is approve, Jack and myself, uh, getting that notice in the paper. As far as the purchase of property is concerned, so far the post contract from the seller to the county has described that and that parcel, uh, where the large soccer field go has block three of given subdivision. And that is mostly correct, but in public, we give it take, he advises that the seller actually wants one of those lines to be a little bit different than what's shown as block three. You look here, reference to this map. This is the line in question. Uh, this is basically the line on block three. The way I understand it, the public, Mr. Tate, is the intent is to take this line as a bearing of this line and continue it straight on up to this town. So it would actually take it a little bit forward, but you showed the big block three. We'll need a survey to describe that.
So you have two things that would have to take place. One, you have advertising, the swap drop, no money changes, and just a hobby property, but you have advertising.
That's correct.
The second thing would be consideration, would be need to decide what they're going to do.
Well, in addition to, uh, getting a survey so that we can describe the parcel that would be required, uh, we would need to discuss appropriate building in this part of the county and with respect to both of the purposes.
This part right here, if you just show on the, that part of the line, nobody knows at this point that they're using property.
Uh, I, I think that is part of the parcel, what Jim was looking at with the vision of, uh, water, water, water. Uh, as you'll see, that's what the blue line is. It, that sub portion of that may be in that area.
Boy, my question is, what comes from it, this part of it, if it's part of the.
Well, it, it would come up, uh, probably somewhere, the line up might be come up in the past, might be here or so. Whatever's in that, uh, what, yes, if you, if, uh, if what we're talking about, Jim, I'll be speaking to whether that's usable or not. I've not actually seen it.
It is useful, Ron, if, if we decide to do something. There is presently a trail system that goes along the creek. Uh, it would be great to be able to cross every single area for the big thick tables, whatever it might be. I don't think it would be necessarily usable for, uh, uh, it is laughing, but I don't know if there's enough rope there to, uh, put an athlete. Far too much, you didn't pipe the entire creek, you couldn't get through any action, I don't think this is in the dark, you say.
Cross the river?
Uh, we would have to cross the creek, yeah.
The way some see it, some other, you're looking at, these are, they're like, a lot of electric parking there either, but, uh, all around in the whole park.
There is, if you, if you look at the, uh, left field of the baseball field. If you look at left field and baseball field, all of that is current paved parking. And all of that, if you can see it coming down the left field line, all that is paved parking. And the big square is the gravel. And you'll see on the mass lines on both of these expanded parking, uh, about a third, that's like, uh, one option, then maybe fifty percent larger one.
All right, any other discussions, Mr. Fisher, take one?
We do need a motion to, to advertise the swap, the optional motion to go ahead and authorize county manager to be there. And they have, uh, a lot of questions, we might purchase, put in the survey, so we have a path, that's, that's.
Well, we won't, we're going to have to have that to advertise, but, uh, we will need to have that for the end of the company. We, we got good description to the parcel for the swap.
Uh, Bron, I'm up to you. If you've got, uh, particular reasons you want to look into it, I'd be more than happy to help you. But it's against this board, wait until next meeting. Uh, as you're, I mean, obviously aware, I'm ready to move forward with it. But if you have particular concerns, I'd be more than happy to, uh, try and address those with good reason, but it wouldn't have to wait long.
Well, and let, let me say this. If you adopt the notice or authorize a notice of intent to swap, it doesn't mean you have to, it just means you're prepared to authorize it at the next meeting. So you saw some latitude, that you need some kind of study and look at things between now and the next meeting.
Well, the only money I think is going to be authorized is just the survey for that one line, right?
Yeah, we don't have an acre, uh, acreage on that, on that one track yet.
Well, that's really the only money that we'd be making tonight, right? I mean, we go ahead and advertise the swap and like, you know, Ron needs more time to look at it and come back to the property, or anybody. Yeah. It's same land that.
Ron, for that, for that accommodate, what you want. Take your break, my name is D. Ford. Any questions?
So I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we go ahead and authorize the county attorney, county manager to let advertise for the swap. And in the same motion, then we go ahead and authorize county manager to count, uh, the block that we require it to be purchased, uh, to be duly surveyed, has to give us, uh, not only for corners of the block, but connect acres of the block. So that is the motion.
That'd give absolutely, give us a proper description to draw a copy.
Do we have second to motion?
Second.
Okay, we have motion to second. Any discussion?
Uh, you know, it's, I think it's a great idea, anything you can do to provide for, for the citizens, I'm, uh, I oppose the swap, it's same area land, same area land, swap they can, they can, I am not. We'll not support purchasing any property that's not budgeted. I oppose the recreational plan in Franklin. Feel obligated to oppose this plan if it requires expanding non-budgeted money, which this will. So with that in mind, I'm hopeful to oppose, but I'm all for that.
Any other discussion? And, and point out, obviously, the vote now is not the purchase or even the, the swap, which is to advertise and gather information. So this is not a voting purpose. Uh, any other discussion? I'll favor the motion, uh, as the motion passes, you vote no on the street.
Excuse me, do you have the idea how much it will cost to buy a piece that's going to be surveyed, I mean, ballpark?
Roughly one forty five.
One forty five?
Roughly.
That was all under new business, the consent. It's you, Max? Uh, consent agenda, uh, we think we'll do that gentleman's getting late, but, uh, we've had a chance to read this minutes in April nine, April twelve, April eighteen, April twenty third meeting. Also three budget amendments are included in there. Uh, the, uh, the Red County Management Director retention condition schedule. We do have a slight change to make that on the health fee schedule. Uh, we do have, uh, the Recreation Commission and the Recreation Director, as you can see, eleven F, had a, uh, change move hours and the process of mission pool, with additions that were made out there, uh, still pretty small. Seth discussed that, we've been still in line with more less than, uh, in our area. So we need for member like to remove any one of those items for discussion. And if so, we do that. And if not, the motion to approve, consent agenda would be.
Uh, just, I'll give, let Jack give us a quick, you know, this retain, uh, document retention schedule.
Okay, so Ron, you can let, you can let out, let that out. Any other thing you want to pull out and ask? And then we can discuss that separately. We remove, we remove the items, uh, eleven B.
Average funding, that's glorious, what is that, except for twenty six thousand dollars for engineering?
Give, I've got one, clerk, wait, clerk, ask you a question.
Uh, you want to go let out?
Uh, on this county manager, back, intention, this position schedule, the city's public agreement, big record, like, I think it's going to vary from time here in state have, the station base, they know they, things on, still, landing, pay, we'll pay, we'll prove it. But I think, I've got this question on how long that period is.
Let's, let's just, that's the same one, Paul, that's the same that Paul, let's remove that, just read the other item that you want to remove. We will, like, that's in the beginning, we can take that.
Can you talk about the regular retention then, Kevin, or the airport funding?
You talk about eleven B, Ron, what?
Okay, and that's the number one seventy five, they'll be under what, eleven B?
That's eleven B.
There's some transfer for general fund, but Jack said that's for engineering studies to widen the airport. That's near the, we'll have to discuss, we'll discuss that. Maybe we agree that, I mean, we'll widen the airport.
Jimmy, you probably hear important detail on that, it's usually.
Let's just, let's just.
We'll, we'll, okay, we'll discuss. So that's, uh, that's number one, seventy five?
Eleven B, number one seventy five.
All right, we'll leave that. Any other, and Paul, you're okay with one, the other, or recommend there for three taxes?
That's just a special, uh, all days.
You're okay with that?
Yeah.
And I could, I could speak to eleven F, the pool, uh, it's going to be two dollars for a child and four dollars for adult, which is very, uh, very good for a pool of that quality. So I, that's regulation, the Recreation Commission and Recreation Director. So I, I would agree with that, that's, that's.
So I make the motion to include the, uh, consent agenda, excluding the item that the dead man is.
And note, note we're removing, uh, P, one seventy five and eleven B. Any discussion about the consent agenda as presented, as remaining? Here you go, discussion, all in favor, Mr. Jackson, say aye.
Aye, opposed.
And the motion passes. Uh, Jack, let's go back to eleven B, uh,
Perpetual pension.
One seventy five, yeah.
The per pere pension disposition.
No, it's not.
No, no, the. Eleven, eleven B, budget million of one seventy five.
Five, five, five thousand power, fifty six dollars. I was trying to go to the airport, but, uh, there's already appropriation, sixteen thousand, six hundred sixty seven dollars under general fund. The total county backs is twenty two thousand. And the airport is receiving two hundred thousand dollars, for those two hundred twenty two thousand, two hundred twenty three dollars. That money is to pay the engineering company for their work on preparing and doing what's necessary in order to, uh, apparently, and, and this for Jimmy again, uh, to do what's necessary. to do what's necessary for the big project, which is actually widening the runway several times. This is actually totally engineering cost, I believe. Jimmy, if I'm not mistaken, from W.K. Dixon, to do the engineering work on the wide runway widening project. Is that not correct?
You are correct, Jack. I'm sitting in on this news, so I can't give the history on. Sorry, I can't. The history of, but. Yeah, I'm a little lost there. I thought this was already paid for. It was given out of this.
We had some, we had some money left over in Lori making the press that. We had sixteen thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars.
Already appropriate.
Already appropriate, but the cost is gonna be.
As I said, I completed a hundred fifty thousand in the grant and the match is always sixteen, sixteen, you said. So it was already one. They're getting additional fifty thousand, which requires that additional preparation of five thousand five hundred cents in order to totally complete the project.
So, so the county, I'll only be mentioning that.
The five thousand five hundred cents, yes.
This amount is twenty, two hundred, two twenty-two thousand dollars. So it's not a big project, it's just.
That's just the design.
Engineer, they, they want to get paid up front when they do that design work, home projects. They do have to have design work before they get to the point of actually going out to the bid and doing the project.
So a decision has been made to widen the airport?
The airport's already got, my, and the airport's already got the word from the FAA right there.
I think they're working, they will, they will receive a lot of funds, LBA funds, to widen the airport, certify things, and safety precautions. And that project, I don't know what it's gonna be, it could just be as much as two million, nine million dollars.
And there will be some matching funds.
Yes, sir.
So we're making the decision. I mean, they're at the seat, they're gonna be paid. What is the payment? Having to get to this point, we're gonna widen the airport.
That's what I'm saying. This is the airport, the park does this. They, they are separate stand on the park, the management, the board. We have the liaison to that. And they actually have to apply for the funds. They don't have much of a stamp, so all the funds that they apply for, all the expenses that are paid, are actually probably channeled back through our finance department process. The county has traditionally matched any federal grants that are available for airport improvements. Even back when there was an airport park in County actually called the airport. Now the airport is not generating enough money on its own. We tell them what the match, do it to ban the airport or improve the airport. And so they should depend on the county to promote the match in order to draw out the grant funds.
Gentlemen, let me take, let me take this home, Jim, and let me, let me get a little research and answer questions. Sorry, I can't.
Yeah, we have a discussion. The decision has been made, we got the.
I wish I could answer your question.
And I'm not more than angry, but, you know, geez, that almost slipped through.
It probably shouldn't be. You weren't. Does, not nobody else.
Jack, I think it's more than discussion.
I understand this concern.
Well, I can't speak, not the airport park, they have to offer.
Unless we need the right members of the jury or, you know, he's chairman.
Obviously, I don't want to be able to answer that question.
Let's get down.
Jim, can't hear that one?
Can't hear that here. Just open discussion.
Let's hold back, let Jimmy come back to us. If he can't answer, we can answer.
Record retention, just a brief. What's that?
Eleven D.
We have many things, our records for certain. So we adopt the record retention policy that the state requires both certain records. Some records can be destroyed after a certain length of time. We hardly ever destroy it, but we, we adopt, we have a record retention policy that appears on the state records. But if the action, the county will prove it, it will be compatible with the state record retention policy. That's what it says.
We don't have a policy that we, the board is formally adopted as a plan.
But our policy is always, and I haven't been here all the time, but I think the county policy's always been very much what I know that but I don't remember everything. I'm as old, I'm almost as old as you are. But I think basically the county policy's always been in comparison to the state policy on record retention. We've got, I wish we had all the records, but we don't. First, all records you gotta keep for so many years. And then sort of those other records we keep for a long time, some records. We actually record the records that we keep at and from out. But this is just the standard of record retention disposition requirements that the state recommends that we do.
Well, that's what it is.
That's all. All we're doing is doing what the state says we need to do.
John, and we don't do any microfishing of any records?
Yeah, we do, we do some, we do some of that in the health department.
Yeah, but what records are you talking about, Jim, record retention?
Just whatever records that they say we have to, with the cultural resources, whatever records it says here, the records here, they've been designated by retention periods for a while. It's been stored, it's administered by events. What'd you say?
It covers everything.
It covers, covers about everything that we hold.
Yeah, they're bigger than that. Most of these records are considered public records. And we don't destroy public records without. So it's cultural resources, it's a set of some rules by which you follow that enable you to not have to keep everything forever.
We are doing microfishing a lot of records, and we have to stay focused. We've got boxes and boxes and, oh, boxes of all checks, receipts and so forth that are, that are pretty old. And we're not sorry to really, because sometimes I was on that list. Probably get to know some of these, but even in that, sometimes we try to release records to cultural resources office in Raleigh. And they keep, but this allows us to retain the records that we need to retain and dispose of the records that we need to dispose of in accordance with the state regulations. That's.
We're doing, is voting to adopt an official method in line with the state record.
It is automatic.
Yeah, I hope the health department, they operate under different retention schedules. I thought this was just for county manager.
That's it. All our records, all our records.
All right.
That's good.
We need a motion to approve that.
Second.
Good motion, second. Go through eleven, eleven D. Consent agenda. To comply with existing laws. Any discussion regarding that motion? Hearing that, all in favor of D, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Believe that is all the consent agenda. Gentlemen, under support, we have that. We have Board Health. I believe we have all three seats. And the recordation is come to those three seats. They've been vacated by one, one, call them empty, the first one. All three have served, three, the second, three are going to be reformed at this time. Do we have?
Mr. Chairman, we have three days. It's, it's being approved by Board Health. I make a motion, if this appropriate, to point to threes suggested candidates for Board Health.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Opposed. That motion passes. The Social Services Board, you have attached email from the Social Services Director, Jake Kingsley, regarding this fact of term, Jim, on the Social Services Board.
John, I would speak to that. As Jack has asked me, that I serve as travel, that goes through a lot of time. This is what we really need a lot of experience. A lot of things have come before him. Jim Warner has served faithfully and attended meetings. It does take a lot of time. So at this time, I would make a motion that we reappoint Jim Warner to, for the next three years.
Second. We have a motion, and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. That motion passes. See, I'll be happy to arrest this, I'm from Chester, Matt. Remember last meeting, we agreed to advertise that for thirty days. And that's what I personally told this last meeting, thirty days. We're making it to the other gene meeting. And if it'd be okay with all, if we could just allow Mr. circumstances, he certainly chaired that. We'd allow him to just serve through the, through our gene meeting and give time for a full thirty days. He has not, he didn't apply, will not apply. We do have some applications, all the people we certainly consider. I would prefer to pick that up for a gene meeting and give it a full thirty days to advertise that.
It'll also give, as the chairman of the board, it'll also give our opportunity to finish their lives, their lives, at least, because you must have loved.
He was not a gene designer, he was studying. And he had to say it would be, they're not, we're not. Kind of top of shifts, Matt, every day, we take the advertising for thirty days. We're not quite there. I'd like to see us keep that open. We need SDs until the judge. That'd be essential to see. That'd be my recommendation, I come from Chester, Matt. That's something that's been. We don't have to take it. We're just, we can, we can serve if we need to. I believe that's all.
Much to the gentleman's favor.
We're recessing, we're.
Yeah, but you need to recess in all the.
We're recessing to Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, five thirty.
By Westman.
By Westman. Do you vote on that? You got a motion?
Second.
All in favor of recessing, all in favor of eight, five thirty, say aye?
Aye.
Motion, that motion passes. Before we all leave. What time we all leave this morning?
No, whatever.
You have it, Jim.
No, I don't.